We know that a lot of cats, unless they really need it, they're sick or injured. But a lot of cats like to be outside, so make sure you microchip your cats. They're not as fond of collars as dogs are, but microchipping will do the trick. So God forbid they do end up in a shelter, we can reunite you with your pets.
A little bit, huh? It's getting there.
This is our one-minute warning. All right, welcome everyone to the five o'clock meeting of the Palmdale City Council. I would like to go ahead and call the meeting to order, and if we could please do a roll call.
Mayor Bettencourt.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Monika.
Here.
Council members Bishop. Loa.
Here.
And Olson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much, and just to make a note, Loa will be doing the meeting remotely. So right now I'm going to have Eric, if you would like to do pledge allegiance.
Sure, please rise. Push your right hand over your heart, and then we'll have a moment of silence that follows. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, we're on item number four. We have some presentations today. We're going to start with item number 4.1, the Fight Fentanyl AV 23 Youth Challenge Awardees. And I think we're going to have Rhonda Perez, or Nardi, sorry, present the awards.
Good evening, council. Today we are very excited because we will be recognizing some very talented youth in our community. As part of the Fight Fentanyl AV Campaign, we held a youth multimedia challenge here in October. And tonight we are going to recognize those winners. We had entries for a PSA video category, art, song, and poetry. It had to include a call-to-action message to raise awareness about the fentanyl epidemic that we're facing in our community and in our nation. We recognized these winners today. First, we will show, right, what they entered. We had high school and middle school categories. For the high school category, we will begin with our PSA videos. We're going to show our third-place winner, which is The Students Are Here, and this one was by Milo Linares and Benjamin Gomez. They also received a $100 scholarship for their winning prize.
You know how I'm like in pain a lot?
Yeah.
I found, I found that like CBD stuff, it can really, you know, like it helps. They put in all the creams and stuff.
Yeah.
So I found this guy on Instagram, right? And he sells, he sells these, oh, he, he used to sell gummies. He ran out, but he sells these like special miracle painkiller pills. They're cheap, and he said it's guaranteed, pain relief guarantee.
Dude, that sounds sketchy.
It's not sketchy, it's, it's just, he's got a lot of customers, and it's cheap, too.
Haven't you heard about people lacing fentanyl into a lot of stuff recently?
Lacing what?
Fentanyl. You don't know that only two milligrams can like kill you, right? That sounds sketchy.
That's crazy, don't try that. Two milligrams is barely anything, it's not going to do anything, I'll be fine.
He's buying painkillers for Rite Aid.
I'm buying it, and there's nothing you can do, so just please leave me alone.
What was in the pills? What was in the? You know what was in those pills? You knew what was in those. You, what was in those? You know what was in? Do better, you, I tell you.
Hey, I'm so glad you're okay. Please know that I'm always here for you whenever you need me, and I hope you know that there's never any judgment here, or just with me in general. This situation must have been incredibly scary, and I'm so glad that your friend knew how to use Narcan and was trained in it for situations like this. I just really care about you a lot, and I just want to make sure that we're being very, very careful when we get substances like this from friends. You know, my immediate instinct would be to, to tell my students, please, please don't do drugs, but I know that sometimes that's not what we want to hear, and that sometimes is not the reality of the situation or what's going to happen, so.
And we have our second-place winners, which are Jessica Mejia and Stephanie Silva, and they received a scholarship amount of $300.
These are going after drug distributors who sell deadly fentanyl to teens. Tonight, two people are in jail, accused of selling fentanyl to a 17-year-old girl who died in her home after taking what she thought was Percocet.
So this is.
Fentanyl pills that look like candy. Drug officials in New York confiscated 15,000 of the rainbow-colored pills, and many of them were hidden in a Lego box.
A tragedy in New York City. A one-year-old is dead and three other children sickened after suspected fentanyl poisoning at a daycare facility. One of the victims, the two-year-old, is now fighting for his.
And we have our first place, which is Celine Diaz and Navai Castro, with a scholarship of $600.
Fentanyl is a fully synthetic-made opioid. It possesses a potency that is 50 to 100 times greater than that of morphine and heroin, which means that even the smallest quantity can have a profound impact on the human body, two milligrams being the lethal dose. It is often used as a prescribed medication, primarily for managing severe pain relating to experiences after surgery and for advanced-stage cancer. However, that does not undermine its ability to kill, even when it is prescribed. Obtaining fentanyl without a prescription is an example of illicit use. This is extremely dangerous, as it can be unknowingly mixed with other potent drugs without a sign of you ever knowing. You wouldn't be able to see it, smell it, or even taste it. According to the National Center for Drug Abuse Statistics, 47% of young people use an illegal drug by the time they graduate from high school. Other uses within the last 30 days include 5% of eighth graders, 20% of 10th graders, and 24% of 12th graders. Because these young individuals are extremely exposed to the dangers of drug use, they can obtain the drug in various places, whether that be in their school, specifically in the school parking lot, out on the sidewalk of their own home, in their school hallways, and more importantly, in the school bathrooms. No matter the place or time, a portion of adolescents will unfortunately fall into the trap of fentanyl and illicit drug abuse. Please join us in the ongoing fight against fentanyl and illicit drug abuse. Reach out to those in need of help and support, let us be the key in saving lives. If you or someone you know is struggling, please call the National Helpline at 1-800-662-4357. You are not alone.
So these were the entries for the videos. We also had poetry, and from high school we had two or three entries. We had one winner, and I'd like to read it. I know the student was not able to make it with us today. Her name is Malaya Lisk, but I believe it's worth reading. "On bright sunny days, on bright sunny days, kids run around with smiles on their faces, sharing candy and talking about their favorite places. On bright sunny days, dogs race each other, wagging their tails happily, digging up bones and playing with their family. On bright sunny days, parents warn their kids, telling them to stay safe, making sure they clean their room and don't stay out too late. On bright sunny days, families anxiously wait for a call, recalling the last time their child was alone. On bright sunny days, police knock on doors, interrogating people, hoping they won't find someone lying on the floor. On bright sunny days, teens still die from fentanyl poisoning while grieving families wish that they saw the warnings." And so Malaya received a $200 scholarship for that. And we move on to our high school art entry. This was also by Malaya Lisk. She will receive a $350 scholarship for this. I believe the paintings, you know, speaks for itself. One pill can kill, if you look at the flowers, some are blooming and some are not. And the next one is our middle school art category, and this is our first-place winner. And this goes to Anayi Macias, her scholarship amount of $200. We also have Anayi's painting here in, in the chambers. We were showing it, and she's also here as well in our audience. We do have certificates for them, to, to present to them. They have also received t-shirts from our fentanyl campaign, and their videos, artwork, will be highlighted in our, on our website, on our fentanyl page, as well as our YouTube page, I mean, site will also have their videos. The City of Lancaster will also be showing them on their site as well, as this is an Antelope Valley-wide campaign. And here are our talented youth. And we have Milo. There you go, we've sent you with a certificate. We're going to have them take photographs here with the council behind. Benjamin Gomez. Jessica Mejia. Stephanie Silva. Celine Diaz. Navai Castro. Malaya is not with us, Anayi. And I would like to also share that the video PSA's teacher, the student, is here as well, Mr. Gonzalez, who has been instrumental in helping us spread the word, as well with other teachers for our future challenges, and very supportive of his students, as you can see by their entries. And so we, if you'd like to come up, we could take a photograph of all of you with our council. Oh, would any of you like to say anything about your videos or your art? Your experience? Mr. Gonzalez, would you like to say anything?
I could, yeah.
Yes, please.
Oh, sure. Just to speak briefly, I guess, on my experience with it. So I teach at Eastside High School, my eighth-year teaching. And I think as most teachers, you like to make the assignments in class relatable to the students, and make it something that they can see the value in. And so film's easy, because it's natural, I think, kind of fun for them, but rather than just have a video project that they do, that we grade, that we kind of watch as a class and it kind of ends, it was exciting for me to be able to give an assignment like this, where we can look at something very serious together as a class, have a good conversation about it, then they can actually make products, video products, that could be kind of shared and hopefully help people, so. It was cool as a teacher side of it, as someone who lives out here for, have lived out here for, you know, 30 years, to see something like this happen, it was a good experience for me, I know for them as well, so. Thank you guys for putting it on.
Before we jump, jump onto our next presentation, I just want to say congratulations to each and every one of you. You guys are clearly incredibly talented, but you guys are the future leaders of this community, and we're so proud to have you represent the Antelope Valley in terms of our awareness campaign. When Nardi started this campaign, she identified targeted audiences. One was the community, another was the parents, and, but most importantly, it was our youth. And today is proof in the pudding that Nardi and the entire collective team's efforts have actually proven to be successful. So thank you so much for carrying on the torch and for continuing to raise awareness and spread the word amongst your students and your colleagues. But also, congratulations, I don't know if there are any of them here, your parents. Congratulations to your parents, you guys got to be really proud of your kids for their accomplishments today. So congratulations to everybody, and teacher, everybody that was involved in this. Congratulations. Item number 4.2.
Ooh, pretty.
I don't know which way to face.
There you go.
Come on around, guys. Come on the other side. Good evening, mayor, mayor pro tem, council members. I am Stuart Thompson, IT manager here, the wonderful city of Palmdale. I'm thrilled to share a momentous achievement that reflects our unwavering commitment to excellence in the field of information technology. The City of Palmdale has been honored with the IT Achievement Award from the Municipal Information Systems Association of California, otherwise known as MISC. This award recognizes our exceptional contributions to the field of IT, our dedication to innovation, and our commitment to serving the community with cutting-edge technology solutions. It is a testament to the hard work, dedication, and expertise of our entire IT team. The MISC IT Achievement Award highlights our achievements in several key areas. Innovative solutions. Our team has consistently delivered innovative solutions that have improved efficiency and services for our community. Security and resilience. We have demonstrated a commitment to a robust cybersecurity and disaster recovery measures, ensuring the protection of sensitive data and continuity of our services. Collaboration and partnership. Our partnership with other municipalities, agencies, and organizations have allowed us to share our knowledge and best practices, ultimately benefiting the city and the region, and excellence in service. This award recognizes our team's dedication in providing exceptional service and support to both of our internal and external stakeholders. We are proud to work, we are proud to have our work acknowledged by MISC, an organization dedicated to promoting excellence in municipal IT. This award reflects not only the skills and knowledge of our IT professionals, but the collective effort of our entire organization in embracing technology as a means to serve our community better. This achievement is a testament to the tireless efforts of each team member in the IT department, and I extend my gratitude to all of you for your hard work and dedication. And just to say that, I've been leading teams for 20 years in IT. I've led teams much larger than this, but never any as dedicated and skilled as this team. So I just want to say thank you to this amazing team of IT.
Stuart, I want to say thank you for all that you do for the city. As you know, we call on you all the time to fix things for us. Change our passwords, fix our computers, get us out of the crisis that we've created for ourselves. And it's nice to see your faces, because we often see your names, but now I finally see some faces that honestly, I, I know names, but I did not, wasn't able to put the face to it. So it's nice that you guys get this award, and we appreciate everything that you do, from fixing our computers, to doing our flock cameras, to all the things you do throughout the city for the residents. It's, it's an incredible amount of work that you do, and you often go unrecognized. And finally, you guys are being recognized for all that you do, and we truly do appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Would you like to do pictures?
Yeah.
Want to come up here and take picture with the council? Okay, now we're on item number 4.3, Palmdale Parks and Recreation Master Plan Findings. Hi, Carrie.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Thank you for having us today. Talk a little bit about our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Very excited to move this project forward. This is the city's first Parks and Recreation Master Plan, so it's a great document to help us prioritize all of our ideas and strategies to make sure that we've got the best park system ever. So we've been working on the outreach phase of this process, and we're here to give you an overview of the key findings from our outreach. While I, while I have the microphone, I wanted to mention for those that are in the room and that are watching, we do have two community meetings tomorrow. We'll be making the same presentation there. Welcome any community feedback that they'd like to make during those meetings. They're at noon and 6:00 PM at the Palmdale Playhouse, and we do have virtual options for both of those. Just go onto the City of Palmdale's website, find the Parks and Recreation page, and we're right at the top, so.
Do you have to register for that?
You do not.
Okay, good, they can just come if they want to.
Absolutely, absolutely. So without further ado, I will introduce our consultants, who will walk you through what we've learned so far from our outreach efforts. So let me bring up Tom Deal and Pat O'Toole.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, mayor and council members, for giving us a few moments of your time. We have a brief presentation. As Carrie said, this is the Park and Recreation Master Plan. We're at our stage of the project, which is called Findings. We're coming and presenting what we've learned up to this point, and trying to confirm with our public meetings tomorrow that what we've learned is correct, and we'll be doing a visioning session with staff tomorrow. I believe this is, okay, it did go, good. Myself, I was the project manager. Pat O'Toole has been on the project with me as the engagement manager, and Randall Koff with Kim Lee Horn has been our landscape architect. To the right, I've just shown the project purpose. This is the City of Palmdale's first Park and Recreation Master Plan. We wanted to make sure that we were committed to diversity and inclusion. We were focusing on creating safe and welcoming community. We wanted to make sure we involved the public. We wanted to improve access to parks and recreation opportunities. We did many things to involve community feedback. We're looking to create a blueprint for developing goals, policies, and guidelines going forward. It really is going to be a roadmap, and as I said, we've been encouraging public participation throughout, you'll see that during the presentation, and again, we'll be doing that tomorrow. These are the steps of a strategic master plan. I'm just going to go through them fairly quickly. We have four stages of public engagement. We came several months ago and did what we called information gathering. We met with most of you individually, and we had community meetings. We also did surveys and many other things I'll talk about in a moment. We're at the second stage, which is findings and visioning. So now we're talking about what we've learned, and we're going to do visioning with the staff tomorrow. We will be coming back two more times to present to the community. We'll come back and present our draft recommendations, which will have goals and action plans. We'll take feedback from the community then again, and then we'll come back one more time and present a final plan, and still take feedback. We had 190 people that we talked to during the onsite meetings in nine different focus groups. We had an English-as-a-second language group, staff focus group, multiple youth groups, school districts, local business, user groups, many different people. We did as much outreach as we could during those days. And you could see, we talked to people that were new to the community and had been there for a long time. During those meetings, some strengths were identified. I'm not going to read all of them to you here, but we've, we have listed those, and those are things that we want to make sure we're focusing on in our recommendations and our goals, that those continue and are enhanced. We asked how satisfied people were with the quality of the existing facilities and services in the following categories that you see here, parks, athletic fields, trails, and so forth. And we had a rating system on a scale of five being excellent down to one. And we had a rating system on a scale of five being excellent down to one, four. And you could see that they all rated two or above, some three. So, these, again, helped us look at what we wanted to consider recommending for recommendations going forward. During those initial meetings, we came up with a series of priorities from people. We took these priorities and we included asking about them in our different surveys and in our own analysis. So, here you'll see a pretty good list of priorities, and again, we'll make sure that as we go forward with our recommendations that we're focusing on these priorities to be part of recommendations and goals. We followed that up with two types of survey. We did an open survey and an invitation survey. The invitation survey statistically valid. It was mailed out to households. We mailed out over 4,500 surveys and followed it up with over 4,500 postcards. We had responses of 1,301 total surveys completed, a confidence rate of 6.5 for the margin of error. So, we learned a lot and had good information there. We compared the survey to the demographics of the community to make sure that they matched up, and again, we were able to match up very nicely. So, we heard from people that represent the community, both in race, age, and where they live. You can see, we hit people from all the different districts. We asked about community values envisioned, and we had both the invitation survey and this open link survey. We compared them side by side, and they validated each other. So, both the invitation people and the open link had similar things to say. We asked about, again, satisfaction with the parks, facilities, and programs, very similar to what we learned in our focus groups. Overall, rating of 4.1 on a scale of one to five, so that was good. Overall, people are satisfied, but we can make improvements, and trails and pathways were very important. This is a matrix that we use, and we charted out where people felt their needs were being met. You can see on the left, there's a high and a low, and then on the right, top right quadrant, that's where you want as many things as possible to be. That's things that are of high importance, and people think their needs are being met, and many things were in that quadrant. There were just two in the lower-left quadrant, those are things, again, we'll look at when we go to make our recommendations. We also looked at it from the open link, the previous one was statistically valid, and again, it was similar. We asked about what do people want in future parks and facilities, and we heard that they'd like to improve safety and security, and they'd also maybe like to see more improvements generally, and we also saw that maybe pickleball wasn't quite as important as some people might have thought in the beginning. But we're going to look at all of that. So, again, we have many different touchpoints that we use to help us to get information. We also did a youth intercept survey. We had 172 youth that participated in that. We did multiple, didn't go, sorry. We did multiple meetings with the youth. They were in person and then also virtual. We asked them about their favorite parks, and we asked them about their favorite activities and facilities. We took all that information, and again, we've included that into what we're starting to look at as we look to build recommendations. We did an inventory and assessment of all of the parks. There were 22 developed parks, 368 acres, you know, you can see all of that's there. But generally, overall, parks are well distributed. We came up with some things that maybe we're going to look to address, like signage and some amenities, things like maintenance and so forth. We compared the city of Palmdale to NRPA metrics of similar-sized communities. Residents per park, city of Palmdale has 7,702 residents per park. NRPA has a lower number, it's 2,287. Acres of parkland per resident, Palmdale is 2.22, NRPA has 10.8. So, those communities have more acres. Playgrounds per resident, Palmdale is 8,069 residents for a playground, NRPA is 3,759. If you look at the bottom box, we're talking about what's happening for future plans. With the development of the 481 acres, you're going to increase your parkland per thousand up to 5.06. So, you're making great strides towards what some of the other communities have. What we'll be doing tomorrow, this is called a key issue matrix. Throughout the process, Pat and I and our team have tracked everything that we've heard, every theme, every comment type of thing, and we tracked it, and we tracked where we heard it, quantitatively and qualitatively. And tomorrow, we're going to start working with the city team to develop recommendations. We'll take what we learn tomorrow, and we'll develop our initial recommendations and goals. This is a sample of what we typically develop. So, we'll develop four, five, six, seven, eight goals for the city of Palmdale for parks and recreation. We'll take each one of those goals, and we'll have an action and an implementation plan. So, every goal will have an objective, and every objective will have multiple actions, and will indicate if there's a capital cost, if there's an operational budget impact, and a timeframe to do that. So, we'll have that very detailed. And then, we'll also develop what we call an implementation plan. There's guidelines for how, once this plan is all done, and if it's adopted, or when it's adopted, how the city can go forward and start to make strides to accomplish these goals, how they can record it, and how they can report it. That's our brief presentation, just wanted to give you an update of where we're at. I'll take any questions that you have. I tried to be brief.
Thank you very much. Does any of the council people have any comments?
I did a question. Thank you so much for your presentation. A lot of your findings thus far are very informative. I'm particularly concerned with the extent of our park system as compared to the national system and the disparity between the two. You noted that we're making strides, and in the next few years, we'll get to five acres, but that's still only half, that's 50% of where the national standard is. So, I know there's a lot of work to be done, and I'm excited that we're, this is sort of the first step to getting there. But I did want to hear, can you elaborate on the outreach that you did in order to disseminate the surveys so that we, I mean, to maximize, this is a master plan, it's going to impact planning for, I would imagine, at least the next decade. I want to be able to say and to know that we've extended the information and tried to reach out to as many people as possible. So, my, particularly, I was looking at the map in terms of responsiveness. I noted that the east side had the lowest number of respondents. So, can you just talk us through a little bit about what you did in terms of outreach for the surveys themselves, but also for the community meetings, for instance, the ones tomorrow? Were they on like social media, English, Spanish, that kind of thing?
Certainly. So, we had a social pinpoint site up, and it's still up, and it'll stay up to the end of the project. It's a website that we developed that's linked to the city's Park and Recreation site, and that was how, one way that we communicated with people to let them know the things we're doing, the things we heard. There was an opportunity for people to provide comments. We asked some survey questions. There was the opportunity for people to go on a map and drop a pin and make a comment, and other people to respond to that. There was also the opportunity just to have a forum, an open forum, and we posted every document that we did throughout the project. We've posted, for instance, the survey results, the report that came from our survey firm is posted there as well. We worked with the city staff to identify those 190 people that we talked to in the beginning, and what we tried to do there was have people from all the different groups, and that's a pretty robust focus group week compared to, we've done over 650 projects. Our company, Pat and I have done over 100, and he's done probably close to 650, he's older than me. But that's a pretty normal number, if not a high number, that we talked to there. The survey was mailed out to 4,500 people, that's pretty standard of what we do, and then we sent a second mailing out, as well as the city did email blasts, postings, different press releases, and it was also posted on our website and their website. All of that is how we did that. As far as the meeting tomorrow night and tomorrow afternoon, that's all been advertised also on our website, on the city website, and the city staff has reached out to any of the people that they have contacts with. So, that's how we're communicating with everyone. The public engagement is very important. We also has consultants went and looked at everything, and are giving you our professional opinion, having had done this many times.
Thank you. And then, just the follow-up question, all of those opportunities, the links and the surveys and the hard copy, direct mailing to the residents, were those also in Spanish?
We made the survey, the social pinpoint site, you click on a button, and it says in Spanish that if you click on this button, you can change it. We also made the survey available if someone wanted it through Spanish, and the online version was translatable through Google Translation. Our, the letter that we sent in the beginning, the survey invitation letter was both in English and in Spanish. And we did have translators at all of our meetings that we had that were in person, like our public meetings that we had in the playhouse and that we're going to have tomorrow and the next day. We had translators previously.
Well, thank you for that. I'm not in the survey business, so I don't know what numbers are realistic. I think I heard you say that we got like 1,200 respondents in total. We've got 170,000 population, 1,200 is wonderful, but I think that we could probably increase that a little bit more. I don't know if we can do a second round or some other additional type of outreach, but it seems that there's a segment of our community that we're missing, and that we should, we should at least make an effort to try to reach.
The margin of error is what we're looking at, and you see there, it's 6.5. That is what the survey people look at is by the number of people that we surveyed and that it was statistically valid, and that it was spread out throughout the community, they're able to make predictions and judgments and recommendations and so forth based on that. So, we didn't stop until we knew that we were statistically valid. Thank you.
Austin, do you have anything?
Yeah, oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm a large believer, if you have a group of 100 people that feel a certain way, or, you know, let's say like 90 out of 100 people feel that way, you could probably assume 5,000 or 10,000 of those people feel the same way. Yeah, it'd be nice to get better survey numbers, but it is, as we all know, it's difficult to get people to participate and get involved in local government sometimes. But I think you guys are along the right path. I think that if you go to the inventory and assessments page, there's a lot of good takeaways there. Having been on this council for a handful of years now, we've had this discussion, I know Laura will remember, when we talked about, well, do we keep adding more parks and expanding, or do we take care of what we have and continue to make upgrades to some of those parks? Like where it says the lighting is aging and lacks sufficient photometric coverage, which I don't know if you guys are paying attention, but we actually are in the process of making lighting, LED lighting upgrades to many of the parks. So, you can check off that box. But I'm a big believer in that there's a lot of parks out there, like Dominic Masari that is in dire need of upgrades, and it's a great park, it's been around for a long time, but I definitely think we should be focused on improving the park space that we have without trying to add on more and more park space, because as you know, it becomes costly over the years to take care of it, and I don't want to have a lot of parks all over the city, but only them, you know, halfway maintained.
All very good points. One of the exercises we just recently did with the city staff with our landscape architect was go through his recommendations for each one of your parks. It'll be in the report, it'll be in the recommendations, it's too much to just put in a presentation, but we went through each one of the parks, and he has a list of things that are simple to do, that'll make a difference, and then things that are harder to do that will make a difference, and we'll be putting costs to those as well.
Right, kind of upgrades, because here's, like Rancho Vista Park, newer parks have uniqueness and individuality, which is great, because if you look at that park, it has kind of all the elements that people look for today, and to take those elements and add them into some of the older parks would be ideal. And I, that's kind of what I envision when we talk about our parks in the future, and of course, adding on as we keep growing, but with a focus on improving what we have.
Yes.
Thank you, Austin. Carrie, do you have anything?
No, thank you, Councilmember Bishop for mentioning Dominic Masari Park. I'm quite fond of that one myself. And if you look at the youth survey, 45% of youth said that that's their favorite park. The next closest was Marie Curie, 24%. But the comments I've been hearing most from those youth is that, yeah, there's just not enough space. The leagues participate there, they're on top of each other, they're fighting over bathrooms, so we need to maintain what we have, but we also have to expand, because these parks are one of our most valued asset in the city. It's the place where kids go to exercise, stay out of trouble, all the good things that we want with this city is in the parks. So, I look forward to the continued conversation, and I appreciate all the work you're doing, and great things are about to come.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Mr. Lowa, if you're online, do you have any comments?
I am online. Isn't the bulk of the parks on the east side of the city of Palmdale as opposed to the west side?
There is, Councilmember Lowa, this is Rhonda Perez. There is a larger concentration of parks on the east side at this time, different amenities and based on whether they're east or west, but yes.
But by square footage, I think the west has us beat.
I don't, I don't know the exact acreage off the top of my head.
Oh, we can find out, but we don't find out.
Yeah, finish my quote, please.
Oh, sure, I thought you were done, I'm sorry.
Well, just briefly, you know, again, I think we all are concerned with the development of the city as a whole, and I just illustrated that, you know, we can be provincial by saying, what about my district, what about my district? And I think that's appropriate to be an advocate for your district, but overall, we should look for the entire city to fulfill these shortages that we have right now, and it's somewhat gross that we fall so short of the averages. And so, I think we need to, we need to fill that out, bring online more parks so that we can have more availability to the community. We are one of the few cities in the county of Los Angeles that actually expanded its population, so people are moving here, we want them to move here, and one of the things people look for, aside from school, jobs, you know, mobility and so on, is parks, because that helps make a little city. So, in any event, I think we should approach both the issue of improving what we have, definitely, but also, as Mr. Olson said, to keep expanding so we can meet these challenges that were pointed out in this survey. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Andrea, you want to say something else?
Just one final point, on a positive note, was it last weekend? I don't know, I lose track of time in terms of events, but since we're talking about Dominic Masari, we just launched pedestrian and bike pathways all around the area, and we did a bike ride from Yellen to Dominic Masari on a Saturday afternoon, and the park, to your point, was packed. I mean, it really is a community center, and there, you know, it was beautiful to see so many families out there and kids participating in the bike trail, sort of safety conversation, and their parents were involved. It was a beautiful thing. So, yes, we, I think Dominic Masari, we just want to end on a positive note, we're making improvements to the parks that we've already got. Clearly, Dominic Masari is one of the gems of our community, and so I just want to let everybody know that we, the bike pathways are open and ready for use, and we encourage you guys to go out and use them. Thank you.
May I make a comment very briefly?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I think it's a very positive note to say that we need to improve everything for the entire city, looking at as a, as a whole. And of course, to balance out for your interest of your district, but as a whole, we need to look at the entire project. I think this survey was very helpful. Thank you again, Mayor.
Thank you. Carrie, I see you, are you wanting to say something else? Okay.
Well, I don't know that it's going to help.
Well, I don't know that it's gonna help, but I, so it, I, the park acreage that I have is broken up by district, and, and District One has the, the most amount of park acres. The, the city probably started to kind of develop from the, from the beginning and, or from, from the center and, and move out. So District One has a hundred and fifty-three developed acres, District Two has sixty-three, District Three has thirty-four, District Four has fifty, and District Five has thirty-eight. So, and, but that, you know, those district lines are-
Which district has the least?
I didn't, I didn't keep track. Let's see, let's see, it's thirty-four with- District Three.
Okay, so what I, what I want to bring up about District Three is that we, we have a grand opening, or what would you call it? We have the new park, uh, playground coming.
Yes.
Ribbon cutting, you call it? Yeah, so that'll be coming up soon. I'll be announcing it at the next council meeting.
We're adding another playground to the mix, so that's a benefit.
More amenities at the, uh, the, the local park in District Three, so that will be coming forward in the next couple of weeks. So thank you, Carrie.
Of course.
Now, oh, I see you reaching, or, or, okay.
No, I, I mean, I just was gonna say that, you know, of course, uh, Councilmember Loa, that we agree that we need to, um, expand parks and, and take care of the parks citywide, of course, but I almost like that we're getting in a war of whose parks are better, because that only benefits the community. If we all advocate for our parks, we're all gonna get more things, and the whole city's gonna grow. So, uh, I kind of enjoyed that conversation. Thank you.
And just, let me just finalize, just, she gave us the numbers, so I just wanna just make this point. Districts Three, Four, and Five combined have a hundred and twenty-two developed acres, whereas in District One, there's a hundred and fifty-three developed acres. Three districts combined are less than one council district, and so I, I understand your point about we want to, we want to build up the city, but we've got to be clear that there needs to be equitable distribution of acreage.
Let me respectfully point out to Mayor Phil Temm that the majority of District One lies east of the Fourteenth Freeway.
Okay, so I'm gonna cut off this conversation now, because, because I would like to go ahead and open it up to public comments on this item and this item only. So, thank you, sir. If you could have a seat for just a few minutes, we're gonna let the public, uh, respond to your presentation. Do we have any speaker cards for?
Mayor and Council, we have Mario presents.
And this is just on this item, Mario?
I know you guys are very excited to see me.
I didn't recognize you.
I know, right? Um, well, I've lived here over thirty years. I was one of that thirty percent of thirty. But I had no idea what this was all about until I came in here, and I agree with everything these gentlemen presented. I, I love it. What I found interesting was the council members looking to vie, to spend our money. And I'm like, okay, you're excited to spend my money. I get it. I'm more interested in the investment and how it's going to actually help the city. Nowhere in the presentation did I talk about, did it talk about the environmental impact, because we are a very unique community. We're a high-desert community. I know that the landscape architects here in Lancaster and Palmdale have actually started putting in native plants. I, I suggested it before, and I recommend these two gentlemen, um, look at Brad Lancaster, who is in Tucson, Arizona, who is actually making significant improvements to the ecology of the community at a significantly lower cost to the community. So therefore, you have more money to spend on parks and the equipment. If you're spending and using your resources wisely, it makes no sense to put a sycamore or a cypress out here that you're gonna have to water when you can put a mesquite or a palo verde, and those would offer shade, which are part of those points that people are actually asking for. They're asking for more trails, so why not lean into nature? I heard nothing from these gentlemen's presentation about the natural impact and their, their, their either closeness or how we could become a better, more beautiful community using these techniques that don't require lots of money, that are actually going to sustain themselves and develop themselves without resources being taken from Parks and Recs to maintain these things, because they're naturally there, and we're just giving them the environment for them to grow. So I'm excited to see the city's investment, but I'm worried about the, the council members rushing to spend our money for their district and go, well, I have more, I need more, and then say, oh, we're gonna include diversity, equity, and inclusion. What does that have to do with the parks? Nothing. So I'm gonna remind everybody to please stay on topic, and I'm going to end my time. Have a great day.
Thank you, Mario, and you know that I have read Mr. Lancaster's work. Thank, thank you for sending me the information. Any other comment?
Mayor and Council, no, no more speaker cards on this item.
All right. With that, I'll close public. Oh, oh, sorry.
My name is Marcia, and the parks, um, in the city of Palmdale are a precious entity. Uh, when I moved here in eighty-four, not so many parks. We were still thrilled to have McAdam, the pool, Corson, the pool, and, uh, Marie Currie, not quite so much of it, but, uh, back then. So, the, uh, just a little history lesson real quick. The citizens of Palmdale, um, wanted more parks. They were desperate for more parks, and unfortunately, they left it up to, uh, uh, voting with, uh, LA County taking the lead. And they always supported the parks, that LA County said they were going to share the money with us, and LA County never did. So the, uh, citizens of Palmdale took it upon themselves, the property owners, to put up a bond issue, and they said that if it passed, if they sent in enough votes and it passed, that they would take on the burden for thirty years of paying for new parks in our city, parks that would be ours and we would be in control of. And that was the extension of Marie Currie. That was the rec center, the pool, and the amphitheater, and the complete creation of the POP, um, pool, water, park, rec center, um, completely paid for by the citizens of Palmdale. Um, I have heard, you hear through the grapevine, that the possibility of maybe another bond in the future might be put up before the citizens of Palmdale to, uh, to build more parks. But I must remind you that you have not fulfilled all of the bond issue originally passed by the citizens of Palmdale. You still owe us two pool covers. I don't know, I think, uh, the Parks and Rec is working on, I know, but-
I mean, literally, we just talked about it last week.
I know, but I'm just setting the word out there, you know, uh, we will support, you know, the future, uh, in development of Palms, but you must come through, because I'm not gonna vote for something that, you know, maybe it's not gonna happen in its completion. I want you to follow through with what you promised us if we willing to fit the, fit the, pay the bill, if we were willing. You said you'd do it, so please follow through, and, um, I'm looking forward to that cover, uh, on that pool, at Marie Currie.
I assure you, I am a huge advocate for you, and we're, we're gonna, yeah, go ahead, uh, City Manager, like, make a comment, because we really are working on it.
So later this evening, before council for consideration is going to be a bond, but it is not a taxpayer bond, it is a lease revenue bond, and you'll get a little more information about, well, you'll get all the information about that this afternoon, um, in a future presentation. And part of that will be consideration of the long-awaited Marie Currie pool cover. Uh, so stay tuned for a little bit more information, Marcia, just tonight.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll go ahead and close public. Um, they're, they're supposed to have their cards in before we, we call for the question. Do we have one more? Because I want to, I want to get to the other public comments. We've got, we've got a long night here. We do or we don't? No, no more? Okay, so we'll close public comments on item four point three, and we'll go on to item number five, which is public comments again. But now it's public comments on consent calendar items only. It says each speaker is allowed a three minutes total in the entirety of their section. So do we have any speaker cards for consent calendar items?
Mayor and Council, we have Eugene Hernandez.
Eugene Hernandez? Where did Eugene go?
To the, uh, restroom.
Oh. Okay. Do we have anybody else?
No, that's the only one we have on, on the consent calendar.
Which, which item was he gonna speak to?
Six point nine.
I'm kinda, I'm trying to stall here, so you can get, you know, six point nine?
Yes, while we await, I'd also like, so we, I would like to request that we pull six five, six six, and six nine.
Timing's everything, right? We'll give him just a minute.
Further conversation on, he's only talking on six nine? Yes.
So you, do you want to make your?
If there is no further discussion amongst the members on the balance of the consent calendar, I'll move those items.
Second.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead and call for the vote.
Mayor Bettencourt?
Yes.
Mayor Phil Timalakan?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bishop?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Eugene Hernandez, want to come up and talk on six point nine?
Mayor, uh, I may have missed it, but didn't we have to, uh, wait for reading of resolutions?
It's in there. It's in the consent calendar.
That is now included in the consent calendar area. Yes.
Thank you. Eugene, go ahead.
Yes, I've been involved in this community since nineteen ninety-six, and I've, I've attended many city council meetings, many commission meetings, and I've seen many city attorneys come and go, but the William Currie's behavior and his attitude and racism toward Chicanos and Chicano leaders is something to behold. He disrupted the meeting of a human relations commission, which he thought was done for his benefit. He's attacked Andrea Alarcon unnecessarily, when she's tried to just introduce a routine item. He, he attacked community leaders like Javier Flores at the Human Relations Commission. He has given wrong advice, or, and people have asked, when can you speak at a public meeting? He's, uh, just been totally absurd and a buffoon, and I do not agree with extending his contract. As a matter of fact, I'm writing to the state bar to initiate a complaint against him for his racist behavior. I have never seen an attorney so unprofessional and, and giving wrong advice, interrupting meetings, and, and totally, uh, totally an ignorant buffoon as Mr. Currie. And I urge this city council not to extend his contract. It, it is a disgraceful behavior by him. He's totally unprepared for this job, and you should not be giving him any credence whatsoever. If you do, you're endorsing his inner racism against Chicanos and Chicanos in this city. It's, it's a slap in our face. It, it's totally unnecessary to extend his contract. Thank you.
Any other speaker cards on consent calendar items?
No, Mayor.
All right, public comments, oh. Come on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Also regarding to, uh, Mr. Currie's contract, uh, I did have an opportunity to read the document that came along with the agenda. I don't know if that's the contract itself, but I did see that in it, it says that he's supposed to give legal advice when asked for. Um, and then there's another document that has to do with the comportment of city council. And in it too, it advises Mr. Currie to give suggestions, recommendations, and whatnot, when asked for. But what we've seen, um, for quite some time now is that Mr. Currie doesn't wait for any of you to say, to ask him anything. He interjects and oftentimes interrupts you right mid-sentence in order for him to make a point, uh, whether it's being asked for or not. I just, Mr. Currie, if you're gonna stick around, you know, uh, why don't you, uh, demonstrate some decorum, some professionalism? See, there you go.
When the client needs advice, they get it. Whether you understand it or not, they do.
Well, that's not the point. It states that you're supposed to give it when requested. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, public comments are now closed. No, public comments are now closed. Now, Andrea, you wanted six point five?
Do you mind if I say, say something on that?
Is it, is it in?
Six point nine, yeah.
Is it gonna be a repeat of what Mr. Javier Flores said?
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mayor. I appreciate that. The entire body, the council, um, being former District Three Planning Commissioner and being part of the Human Rights Committee now, I'm not a civil rights attorney, I'm not an attorney. Uh, however, I do do a little background research on the position that your role plays. I've met you, we've had limited conversations, but as a member of a body that represents the city, uh, I can only say that I concur, the interjections that are not in compliance of your job description, and that is when called upon, right? So, um-
Mr. Currie.
And once again, I'm speaking, and, and as I understand, you're not too engaged with public speaking. Having said that, I support if it's in compliance with the job description, but to date, it hasn't been that. So I'm not speaking for anyone who's spoken in the past, but I can only tell you, as someone who wants to serve the community, have witnessed. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Richka Eagle with the Palmdale Freedom Coalition. Um, I would just like to say that, that I hope you do endorse his employment as our city attorney. Given the other prospective, uh, attorneys that are perhaps in the running, I think he's the right choice. I don't always agree with the way he does things, but I think it's rather ironic to hear certain individuals come up here and talk about decorum and public deportment. I mean, from a guy that writes letters to people saying that members of the Palmdale Freedom Coalition are violent, right-wing extremists, and he's gonna talk about behavior. It is the First Amendment right, but you gotta be right about it. You can't slander people. Anyway, as far as PFC is concerned, I hope you hire the man.
Anybody else?
Seeing none, we will close public comments and move on to Andrea Alarcon's request to pull item number six point five.
So six point five and six point six are, are both, um, public works or infrastructure, uh, projects. I just only pulled them so that we can accentuate the work that's coming, and because I think we often get criticism that we're not advocating for funding, uh, and we're not, uh, doing the, the, the infrastructure improvements that the community so often calls for. So I just want to give you an opportunity to talk about, I would imagine we could do both of them at the same time, because they're kind of related. Um, just to talk about what the projects are, how much, you know, money we're gonna bring to the community and the delivery of the projects, that would be great.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ahmed Heshamian, Deputy Director of Public Works, standing for, uh, Director Glidden. Uh, I'll be happy to answer that. Let me just, uh, mention that, that we are talking about two, two different projects that we are gonna be, uh, working with the county, because half the street is in the county, half the street is in, in Palmdale, so therefore, it just makes sense to work together and get, get it done. The first project, six point five, is Palmdale Boulevard from Fiftieth Street, uh, to Seventy-Fifth Street East, and then portions of Fortieth Street, uh, from Avenue N to Avenue N eight. These projects are, um, definitely needing rehabilitation and overlay. Uh, they have, uh, they carry good number of traffic and, and, uh, a high number of, uh, traffic, and also based on, uh, pavement assessment and, and, uh, and the needs of the community. So that is the project in six point five, and similarly, uh, for project, uh, mentioned in six point six, is actually Tenth Street East from Elizabeth Lake Road to Yakka Street, uh, Yakka Tree Street. And, uh, I would just invite people just to Google Walk It and look at the condition of the street. I'm sure it would be an asset to the community, and these are, uh, streets that, Tenth Street serves the shopping area and, and commerce, and then, uh, Palmdale has a high ADT, has a sort of arterial, uh, bit of traffic in a lot of the town. So yes, uh, this will be a good thing, and, and obviously, part of the money will come from the county. So yes, uh, this will be a good thing and, and obviously part of the money will come from the county for their portion of the work.
Thank you for that. I, again, I just wanted to shine a light on over two million dollars of road, uh, improvements that are coming to our communities in the very near future. So I just wanna say congratulations and thank you for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the city council?
If not.
About the good work?
Thank you.
And also, uh, for those of you that are fanning themselves, it's a little warm, we didn't, we just turned the air on, so I'm right where I'm with you, I'm sweating dead too.
So thank you for your presentation. If there is no further dialogue, I'll move items six point five and six point six.
Second.
All right, I'll let Austin second it. Can we call for the vote?
Mayor Bettencourt?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Timalakon?
Yes.
Councilmembers Bishop?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on.
So I'll move the, to, um, I'll move to, um, six point nine.
Oh, okay. I'll second that. We didn't do six point nine.
Yeah.
So we did six point five and six. So yes, six point nine also, I guess it wasn't included in the vote?
So mayor, that was six point five and six that we were making the approval on, so now we're moving to six point nine?
Yeah, Loa, Loa made the motion, I'll make the second.
On this, okay.
If we can call for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Bettencourt?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Timalakon?
No.
Councilmembers Bishop?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, moving on.
Mayor, may I come in briefly on that?
Yes, please, go ahead.
You know, we went through quite an arduous, um, process in, um, bringing down the candidates to, to finalists. And, um, we wanted, uh, this basically one of the attorneys to be, uh, actually here in Palmdale. And Mr. Curly's firm would be, uh, handling, uh, a myriad of matters with, uh, essentially Curly's firm being the principal city attorney. We, we processed, uh, quite a number of applicants, we looked at it very carefully. We looked into the background of people, uh, and looking at Mr. Curly's background, and I researched the background on, on each of the candidates. There was nothing about Mr. Curly's background that includes any admonitions, any violations of the state bar rules and regulations, any complaints against him for being a racist or anything else like that. That simply is not in the record. And in viewing the two finalists, um, let's say Mr. Curly and his firm and the other gentleman, who was, uh, also eminently qualified. But I believe that, uh, Mr. Curly's firm brings a substance, a breadth of legal knowledge and experience that will assist the city of Palmdale moving forward better than any of the other candidates that we saw. Many very qualified candidates, but I believe that Mr. Curly and his law firm, uh, brings the best in terms of legal expertise to our city. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so we're gonna move on to item number seven, joint public hearing, City Council, Palmdale Financing Authority.
Mayor and council, our Director of Finance, now IT and HR, uh, is before you this evening with a recommendation for a bond, as I talked about a little bit earlier. We do have a presentation before you that will go into the specific detail. And we also have our consultant Suzanne Harrell here, who has been with us for, well, I won't date her with how long she's been here with us, but she has a very long history with the city of Palmdale. Um, and we'll be able to answer any questions you have as we advance this initiative forward for the, um, investment in economic development as well as several other opportunities here before us in the city. So I'll turn it over to Janelle, thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Good evening, mayor, mayor pro, members of the council. Again, Janelle Sampson, Director of Finance. So the item before you this evening is, uh, going to be a public hearing to receive testimony concerning the approval of lease revenue bonds uh, by the city and the Palmdale Financing Authority. This brief presentation, um, will occur followed by the opening of the public hearing. And so to start off, back in March of twenty twenty-two, the city council held a retreat. At that point, goals and priorities were identified and communicated through the city manager to staff. Um, staff then used these goals and priorities to guide the development of our budget for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four term. And while many of the programs and projects that were identified as priorities were encompassed in that budget, several items are of large magnitude that could not be, um, appropriated through an annual budget process. Um, so what I'll go through here is what the city has as options for financing such projects. The city essentially has four pro- four options for financing, um, projects. There are pay-as-you-go, these are items that the city can incorporate in our annual, annual budget process. Uh, they do not require outside financing. We have intergovernmental revenues or grants, we receive grants from federal, state, um, other miscellaneous agencies. And, um, so that can cover a, a large variety, we have other sources, special revenue sources as well. The third option is borrowing in the form of municipal bonds. This is what we have presented before you this evening. Our last option shown on this screen is our, the EIFD, the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. The city of Palmdale recently formed our EIFD. Um, to date, we have one year's worth of revenues, approximately three hundred thousand, um, in revenues brought in from this incremental property tax, um, district. Um, so as you can see, first year in, EIFD has limited amounts of funds to support, uh, large infrastructure deals at this point in time. However, in the future, this would be an option. The next slide here, going back to our council retreat in March of twenty twenty-two. Um, the set of goals and priorities were developed, um, based on council feedback, and several large projects were identified. What we identified in these projects, there was a larger list of projects, some larger, some smaller, some incorporated in the budget, as I mentioned, others were identified as requiring outside financing. What we looked at was the type of project, the dollar amount required and the timing. So we have categorized those into the columns here, immediate needs or longer-term needs. We've identified the immediate needs being approximately one to six months or longer term, twelve to twenty-four months. Those are projects that we can start later in the process. The slide before you of showing immediate needs, these are projects that were identified, um, to be required within one to six months, projects that staff have worked towards as a result of the priorities and goals set forth. And these items on this slide are incorporated in the proposed bond that is before you this evening. So we'll go into a little more detail on each of these. But the first million, uh, I'm sorry, the first item here is eighteen million dollars of, um, land acquisition. This is a site of approximately fifty-six acres the city has identified and is negotiating, um, to acquire. So we would, um, identify, we have identified that that's not something that we would be able to fund through our annual budget and, and municipal bonding would be the best option here. The next one is, uh, ten point eight million dollars in land purchase, um, in the Ritter Ranch area. This is just over six hundred acres of land. Approximately four hundred of that would be developable in the future, and the city, um, would have some flexibility as to how that's developed in the future, um, where we would have a return on investment. Uh, the last is five million for economic development projects. So I'll go into a little bit more on each of these on the next few slides. All right. The land acquisition, um, is a long-term financing. This is a thirty-year bond, um, just due to the nature of, of the property and the amount. Um, what the city is looking at with this one is fifty percent taxable bonds and fifty percent tax exempt. So the reason for this is the expected use of the property. Um, it's anticipated that about fifty percent would be used to either further sell in the future to developers or lease, um, for economic development projects. Um, those, that portion, the fifty percent that would be used to either sell off or not be retained as city property, does not qualify as a tax exempt bond. The fifty percent tax exempt would be the anticipated land that we would assume at this point we would keep. Um, if a portion of the property is sold, those proceeds can then be recycled into further economic development projects that the city has or to repay, um, that debt service. The ten point eight million dollars towards a land purchase agreement, this would be long-term, um, long-term financing as well, thirty years. Um, and again, as I've just mentioned, uh, previously, this is just over six hundred, about six hundred forty-nine acres, I think to be exact, in the Ritter Ranch area. Um, and again, the city can resell that in the future, uh, we can keep it, we can, um, utilize that for open spaces, housing development, trails, et cetera. All right, and the next portion of this, the five million for economic development, economic development opportunities, this would be a hundred percent taxable bonds due to the nature of its economic development, and there would be a return on investment for these. Um, but you'll see there's also, they're shorter term, they're a ten-year bond as opposed to the prior two, which are long-term thirty years. Um, the intention here is to provide startup capital, um, and have that shorter repayment period to match the return on investment. So the city, with regard to economic development, the city is in negotiations for development of commercial projects that could potentially benefit from this, thus also bringing back sales and property tax revenues into the city. This next slide goes over longer-term needs.
Martian, there's a cool cover.
All right, so again, this, this outlines longer-term needs. These are projects that are identified, um, to require some additional work to get us to a point where we can start. So these projects are to be considered separately, um, in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, roughly in that timeframe. Uh, they'd be brought back before the council, they're not a part of the bond issuance proposed tonight, but, uh, we do have longer-term plans.
Janelle, if I may, I, I apologize to interrupt, but just to provide a little bit more clarity here, the, we do intend to bring another bond before council in probably by June of next year for these very items and anything else we identify along the way. The difference, the reason these aren't coming before you today is there, is a, is that there is a clock on municipal bonds. As soon as you're issued the money, you must execute on the items and have them fully built or acquired or whatever that looks like within three years. A lot of these require some very significant design, which we are in the process of initiating now. And I didn't want that clock, or we didn't want that clock to start until that design is done, so that we have the full amount of time to develop them.
Thank you.
Was that reference to the Marie Kerr pool cover?
Et cetera.
Cause it just seems like we had an awful long time to do the design. What, twenty years? It's been a long time.
You have, but, or the council.
I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just saying.
It was never initiated to my knowledge, but it is on the books now.
Okay, thank you.
That better be the nicest pool cover I've ever seen.
So as you can see on, on this slide, the Marie Kerr pool cover, Drytown Improvement, Civic Center and Economic Development, these all, we're looking at, you know, the life of the assets and, and the improvements, and we have some proposed long-term funding. So you'll see twenty years roughly for the pool cover, twenty years for Drytown and, and thirty years for the Civic Center, given the, the magnitude of what those projects would entail. And again, um, given that we need time to complete those designs and be ready, we don't want to issue bonds before we're ready to use those funds. So we wanna be in a place where we can begin construction and not, um, you know, just begin design and have these funds sitting here waiting to be used and have a clock ticking. Any questions for me so far? I am going to pass the mic over to Suzanne Harrell, the city's municipal advisor, and she's going to continue on with the presentation this evening. If you have any questions, please feel free.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. Um, the slide that I'm presenting right now just shows you the breakdown between the tax exempt and taxable bonds that are proposed to be issued. Tax exempt bonds means interest on the bonds is tax exempt to the investor, and so you are able to issue those bonds at a lower interest rate. Taxable bonds, um, are just like, you know, US Treasury bonds, the interest on those are taxable to the investors, so the interest rate's a little bit higher. But you can see that there's about thirty-four million dollars of projects. We are proposing to refinance some outstanding twenty-twelve, uh, lease revenue bonds that the city has. There's not any debt service savings associated with those, but it's an integral part of providing enough value, uh, to support this, uh, the new projects that are being financed. So we did, uh, look at, uh, different ways to structure the bonds, as the, uh, Director of Operations said. Um, you have existing debt service, and we were trying to look at the useful life of the assets being acquired or the projects being funded. And we tried to wrap those ten-year bonds, thirty-year bonds around your existing debt service and looking to kind of maintain a level general fund expected contribution to debt service so that you, for planning purposes, um, it, it's a lot easier to budget debt service if it's the same number every year instead of going up or down. Um, so there's a, a portion that we expect to be allocated to the general fund, and the rest is likely to come from Measure AV. Um, the city recently met with S and P and had your credit rating affirmed at A plus. Uh, S and P did acknowledge that you're on a, your recent economic activity trajectory is pretty impressive and that you are doing a lot to sustain, um, your general fund balance levels, and so they were very impressed with that as well. Um, they, so they did affirm your current rating, so, but we do expect to purchase bond insurance, and that's just, uh, kind of a financial tool to improve the, uh, or lower the interest rate. Um, so we're doing what we can to make sure this is as cost-effective as possible. Um, this is just, uh, um, a chart to kind of give you some background about what's happened to interest rates recently. So really, even since the summer, interest rates have gone up about one percent. And that's obviously as a result of everything we know about what's happening in the economy and what the Fed Reserve has been doing. Um, the Fed Reserve did not raise interest rates today, so that's a good thing, um, for this bond issue. Um, although the market has kind of been factoring in, um, some of these future possible rate increases, um, already, so. In terms of the debt service allocation that I was mentioning, this graph shows the yellow bars are your existing debt service that you're currently paying out of the general fund, and the blue bars are the new debt service for these bonds. And you can see the black line that goes across at two million dollars, that's the expected contribution, um, of the general fund to debt service. And you can see kind of backfills when your existing debt service goes down, the, the general fund will pick up some of the new debt service. And then the, um, the rest of the blue bars will be, uh, anticipated to be allocated to Measure AV. You do have some debt service that's also paid by Prop C and the Park Fund, um, that's not being paid by the general fund. I don't know if there's any questions on that. So the recommended action tonight is to, uh, open the public hearing and take testimony. And after you close the public hearing and have your discussion, uh, we recommend that you adopt the city council resolution, which authorizes the legal documents and approves the form of various, um, agreements. And then the finance, your Palmdale Financing Authority adopts a resolution, which also approves those form documents as well as authorizes the city manager, um, as the executive director to, to issue the bonds within the parameters that are specified in the resolution. So that concludes the presentation, if there's any questions.
Thank you, council, do we have any questions? Mr. Loa, do you have any questions? Your, your mic's not on, sir. Mr. Loa, we cannot hear you.
I'm good, uh, thank you for the presentation, I appreciate it. And it was also very well presented, uh, in our briefing, so, uh, I, I believe we've received substantial information on this topic.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Uh, we'll go ahead and at this point, we will call for public comments on this item. Do we have any speaker cards for this item?
Mayor and council, there are no speaker cards on this item.
Thank you. Anybody want to rush the mic?
My name is Marsha. Um, on the presentation, the first two with the freeway, uh, land, and I think they mentioned Ri- Ritter Ranch. and I think they mentioned Ri- Ritter Ranch, I would have liked to have seen cross streets. I need to know where that freeway land is, and out by Ritter, you know, what we're talking about, just not names, just not vague references. I, I wanna know what you're looking to buy. And also that graft with the yellow and all that blue, for decades it looked like, and a lot of that was the AV measure, every year, over a million, if not more, every single year, for that whole graft across. That was a lot of AV measure stuff. And you know, it's not a piggy bank for all these city things. I mean, gosh, you want furniture for the new code enforcement people, you know, and you wanna use AV money, measure money for it. I'm sorry, it's just not an endless piggy bank, okay? So about the pool cover. So initially, for those of you that are property owners and look every year and it says parks, and you're going, where, where parks? Anyway, on the initial bond, there were going to be covers for both pools that were gonna be built, but they were going to be removable covers. They were gonna be put on in the winter and taken off for the summer, so we wouldn't look like people that swim at Eastside, all white, we would have tans. But, once the bond passed, then all of a sudden, the fire department said, uh-uh, you're not putting those buildings up there, you know, because they're gonna roll over like a bouncy house and kill people. So, that's why they are not covered. They were initially financed at, I think, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, that's all it was, for each of those covers, back in the Stone Age, when you guys passed this. So that's why, you know, it didn't happen. But, they were smart enough when they built the pools, that they did put in the foundation legs for a cover to be put. So it's not much, but it's something, that they don't have to dig up so much, uh, to put the cover on the, um, over the pools. But, that's why there's not covers, but there's gonna be a cover, and we're all gonna have happy days.
Thank you, Marsha. Did you wanna address any of her comments regarding Measure AV?
Specifically, um, that, we do have this allocated to Measure AV, this is a permissible use of Measure AV, it does result in public benefit. What we're trying to do here is invest in the city's future and find opportunities for revenue as well. So very often, lease revenue bonds, um, in my experience, don't have to have a corresponding revenue, but we've really tried to design this so they can. That's why we've chosen, um, the, I would say, planning area or Phase Five of Ritter Ranch, which is what butts Leona Valley. Will have some significant, uh, trail systems and open passive space, but does have, um, about four hundred developable acres that we can sell, develop, however that looks like in the future, we don't know yet, but there is a tangible, uh, what am I looking for, asset that we will have as a result. So it's not just investing money that won't bring it back. The same thing with the freeway land, that is generally bound by Palmdale Boulevard, Division, the Antelope Valley Freeway, and Q. So it's that large parcel along the freeway, the same thing there.
Some of the concerns that I've heard is that we will be depleting the Measure AV funds for projects like this, and there'll be no Measure AV money left to do other things within the city that needs to be done.
This is approximately ten percent of the Measure AV annual budget.
If there's a cap that we can put on the Measure AV funds that are gonna be distributed to this bond, so that it's not just an, like, oh, this, this year we, it's ten percent, next year we're really short, so we'll go to twenty-five percent? Is, is there going to be a, a strict control? Cause that Measure AV money is supposed to be spent on a variety of different things, not, not just on, on bond servicing.
So that would be up to the council, every year when you adopt the budget, you can, uh, accept or deny the staff's recommendation for the use of Measure AV dollars as designed and presented before you.
Okay. Anyone else's comments?
Yeah, I'd like to, um, point out that these are significant, uh, developments that we're talking about, long-awaited, the pool covers, and yeah, I agree with, uh, Councilman Bishop, it better be go- golden-lidded, that amount of money, but I know how things are in our current economic times, everything has gone up. The project, the Division and Palmdale Boulevard is going to be something else for the entire city to be very proud of, and, uh, and participate, use, and enjoy. So I think this is going to be, uh, borrowing, that is going, that is well-intended, and, uh, will be taking care of future needs for a long time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Loa. Alright, so we'll go ahead and close, have I already closed public comments on this? Okay, I'm closing public comments on this. And, uh, we don't vote on this, do we?
Yes, and close the public hearing.
To, to piggyback on what Richard said, I, I believe it is, uh, good that we're exploring options like this to leverage, um, our assets, not only to, uh, improve the quality of life and bring amenities, but as to look at this, uh, as investments in bringing more to the city of Palmdale. Like, this money will, uh, come back hopefully in two or threefold, what the investments we're making. So not only will, it will bring amenities, but will bring money back to the city as well.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, just to piggyback on what Mr. Bishop said very briefly, uh, I understand that the four hundred-plus acres that we're going to be obtaining in the area of Ritter Ranch is actually a very attractive price for the city of Palmdale. Can you comment on that, uh, Ms. Press?
In initial, uh, reports that we have received, though we have bonded it for ten point eight, it has come in significantly more valuable than that at this current time. So it only stands to reason that it would increase in value.
And it's already more valuable than, in other words, when it was appraised, uh, it turned out that was more valuable and in love that, that money would be for that project.
Correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Olson?
Yeah, so, look, I know everybody's concerned about Measure AV, but we have this, uh, Measure AV funds, and the city needs to think like a business. So we're using this to invest into assets that we can then leverage to create revenue, so that we can have more funds to do things like pay for the parks. It's all strategic plan. Staff has been going over this for a long time, it's been very detailed, and, um, I appreciate all the hard work from staff. And if public hearing's been closed, I'll make a motion to, uh, adopt resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, can we call for the vote?
Mayor Bettencourt?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Alakon?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great, now we're on to item number eight, non-agenda public comments. Now is the time for the public participation on items not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is allotted two minutes total for the items not listed on the agenda. Do we have speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor and Council. We have Eugene Hernandez.
Uh, I would like to thank Jason and the whole Palmdale Sheriff's Station and your Code Enforcement Bureau for helping to clean up the Tenth Street East and Palmdale Boulevard. They did a fantastic job. I went by there, and they were there, and, and all the gang members, ten, forty gang members were disappeared. And I just would like to say that I hope surveillance of that area continues, because I talked to the, you know, business owners there, and they feel, they feel much more safe now that these drug dealers and, and gang members are not there. And I'm still concerned about that liquor store, Sam's Liquor Store, because they seem to be a magnet where they, they travel. On another item, I would like to, um, uh, it was a presentation about the parks, I mean, the public works, and they said they had seven hundred employees, they had a fantastic slideshow, but I still see no improvement on the Avenue R. And today, I, I was stunned to find out the whole Tenth Street, um, East is closed off from Sierra Highway all the way down to Palmdale Boulevard. And I wonder, why does one agency saves have the ability to impede traffic in the middle of this city? Uh, it, it, it boggles my mind, I have to travel a mile out of the way to go to my bank. And, and I still see no workers working on Avenue R in that highway of death that we have there. And now you have another, um, ditch that's being built along Twenty-Fifth Street, uh, East. And I, I, I wonder, what, did you, did they, did they give a furlough to all the public workers for Christmas? That they don't have to come back to work, because I never see any work there. So, um, those are my concerns. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Jess Enos.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. I'm a member of the Palmdale Freedom Coalition, and I am here to express my disgust at Ms. Alakon's conduct since she's taken office. Ms. Alakon, your conduct and representation of this city is a disgrace. Your drunken outbursts, not only in our community, but within this chamber, should have been grounds for you to forfeit your seat. You constantly disregard the position you hold, and it's quite embarrassing, and to be honest, you should be ashamed of yourself. This is no longer a slight misstep or one-time deal, you have repeatedly violated trust within this community, not to mention you're on probation. Did you notify your district of this when you ran for, for your seat? And why isn't anything being done about your repeated probation violations? How is it that one of us in this room would be arrested for violating our own probation, but for disorderly conduct you've repeatedly displayed, yet here you are? I ask the council and citizens of the city, doesn't that frustrate you that this woman is being treated as if she is above the law, above the law? Doesn't it frustrate you that she sat here applauding students for their fentanyl videos, yet repeatedly puts the public at risk with her own substance abuse? Rules for thee, but not for me? The question the citizen should be asking is who this woman has in her back pocket to be so untouchable? Ms. Alakon, you need to go, you need to do this city a favor, resign from your seat, just like you did from your LA County position. You are not someone we want representing our city, and definitely not someone who should be, should use us as a stepping stool for your political career. Citizens of Palmdale, it's time to act, remove this woman from her seat. Not only are we fighting government corruption in all levels of our state and federal government, we now have it at our front door. Ms. Alakon, I wouldn't get too comfortable in your seat, cause I promise you, you won't be there long.
Next speaker?
Rich Gallego.
Uh, Rich Gallego, Palmdale Freedom Coalition. I wanna echo what Ms. Enos just said. We're getting really, really tired of getting reports of Ms. Alakon's behavior, alcohol-fueled most of the time. Um, we're tired of the idea that there's a tiered justice system, multi-tiered justice system. If I had caused a drunken disturbance at Los Originals Bar and Grill, I would not have been escorted to a private residence by the Sheriff's Department, yet she apparently was. If I had caused a disturbance, again, alcohol-fueled, from what we're, we understand, at Juan Correio's office, I would not have been allowed to simply leave after I was being detained when they were trying to decide if I should be arrested or not. So, you know, it, it's, I have nothing but respect for the job that our sheriffs do, but there's something going on at the higher levels that is covering for Ms. Alakon. We as citizens are sick and tired of watching her embarrass our city. The, the idea that she would run for office while under probation for yet another DUI, and ask for the, the public's trust to be their representative, but didn't disclose to any of those people that she was currently on probation. It's a bit hypocritical, to say the least. And you can shake your head all you want, but we've got the papers, we've got all the documents. And now, yeah, of, you always say we're wrong, but we're not wrong, we've got the proof. And I'd like, maybe you can tell me, because we're looking at a lot of things. Um, I understand that there's interest in bringing a hydrogen plant to the Antelope Valley. If that's the case, I, I, I'm gonna be looking at possible conflicts of interest, cause I understand from sources that have been reliable in the past, that you maybe are beginning, are getting a, a, a fee for one, from one of these companies, uh, hydrogen companies, something around eight thousand dollars a month, a consulting fee. Uh, now, I wanna know if you're willing to state for the record publicly that that is or is not true. I don't know for certain, but we'll find out. So I'm calling for your resignation as well. I'm tired of being embarrassed and our city being a laughingstock because of your behavior. Thank you.
Yulga Vargas.
We submitted a request to the city council to have a town hall meetings, informal, not like this setting formal. I wanna thank Mike Garcia, our congressman. He came to a town hall meeting, we were supposed to be together maybe an hour, hour and a half. He stayed there four and a half hours to the end, and he said, anybody else has any questions? He was so graceful with his time and effort, and I appreciate that very much. And one of you city council member, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, responded to our request to have city council meetings, informal, I'm, I'm sorry, town hall meetings. Now, I wanna say something that's very, very important in my heart. Ryan Klinkerboer, our sheriff deputy, was shot and killed Saturday night, September sixteen. Uh, members of PFC, we all went there, and thank you, Rhonda and Anthony, we were there too, thank you. It was a very somber experience, I'll never forget. To put it in perspective, after I was here some thirty years, this child was born here, Ryan. He was only thirty years old, four days after he was engaged. I don't want anybody to forget that. Uh, we have Steve Holmes Memorial Park, so I beg of you, the very next day, I gave a letter to Richard Loa, thank you, Mr. Loa, uh, that we should name this Desert Sands Park, Ryan Klinkenboer Memorial Park, forever. And also, I suggested that from Sierra Highway all the way at least to Fifty-Three Avenue Q should be named Klink's Way, because everybody called him the Sheriff Department Klink. I really appreciate if you consider that, thank you.
Thank you, you're very kind. Next speaker?
Carol Ross.
I'm gonna go all over the place. First of all, um, Kaleidoscope was amazing, the, uh, yes, the Friday night, uh, we'd never done that before, and I thought that was amazing to expand on it, and the, um, drone show was like over the top, that was spectacular. So that was really cool to see. Um, and then I did wanna talk about the graffiti and dumping really quick. Um, I go walking, um, often in the New Nature Preserve area, that's off of Elizabeth Lake Road, right there by Highland Avenue, and there is a ton of graffiti, I had actually taken a bunch of pictures, I was hoping to bring it here. One, one of the walls, uh, the new Joshua Ranch, or no, I'm sorry, um, I think it's Creekside. Um, the new homes, they've put up a brick wall, it was loaded with graffiti. Uh, I know they reported to the city, it was painted over, I went back, there's more graffiti again. It's on the benches, it's on the bridges going across, so it is a problem. And so when we talk about getting more land, and I know we're talking about the Ritter Ranch, um, I think any of this stuff, if we're building new parks, we're putting these nature reserves, if we don't get a hold on the graffiti and, and get that under control, and the dumping, there's just mattresses already dumped in the new reserve as well, I just feel like it's a waste of money. Because we can put all these things up, but if they are just constantly trashed, we, it looks like a ghetto. So I, I just wanted to say that. And then also, two town hall meetings, I'm a real big advocate of that. My husband put together an ordinance to try and get, uh, town hall meetings, and the only person that responded was, uh, Mayor Bettencourt. Um, I think that it's important, I know she had mentioned you guys are pressed for time, and you meet with a lot of different groups, but if you did one meeting with your constituents, I think you wouldn't have to meet with so many different groups, which honestly, I think that is a way to create division instead of unity.
Thank you. And can, can I just address something that, it, we, we are working on better lighting and better security in some of those areas where they're constantly getting tagged. Um, we, it's a, it's a huge problem, it's a recurring problem. So we are working on, on getting some surveillance cameras up there and some lighting, I just wanted to let you know.
Danielle Chavez.
Hi, my name is Danielle Chavez, and I am a student in Political Science at ABC, and I just had a few questions I wanted to ask the mayor. Uh, the first question that I had was regarding, uh, the roads, especially on Avenue R, and then also on Twentieth Street. Uh, there was a lot of exposed holes all over the place, especially on Avenue R, those trenches. So I wanted to ask, does the city have any plans to fill those holes before? Because, uh, from my knowledge at least, we're supposed to have a, uh, more, a, a much bigger, uh, storm coming this winter at least, you know, more rain, more precipitation. So I wanna know if there's any plans to, uh, deal with that. Uh, another question I had was, is the, uh, the city doing anything to, uh, prevent, uh, new, uh, street racings that are happening at night? Uh, I know from experience going, driving around at night, there's cars constantly going at least like a hundred miles per hour on Sierra Highway, Avenue S, so I wanna know if the city's trying to do anything to, uh, prevent stuff like that. Uh, another question that I had was, um, can you describe any, uh, specific policies and initiatives that you've had that, uh, a significant impact on the city's residents? Thank you.
Next speaker?
Vicki Ventura.
I keep shrinking. Gosh, that's not good, right? Anyways. Good evening, council members, Mayor Laura Benning Court and City Manager Rhonda Perez. I want to thank you, all of you and the AV Measure Committee for the grant the Ventura Foundation received. It was put into great use to our local students. We offered leadership classes to our local Palmdale students. They received skills that are gonna change their lives forever. You're gonna have the opportunity to hear from some of the local students and also from Viviana Vargas, who was our instructor. You know, unfortunately, a lot of you weren't able to attend their graduation, so we brought them to you so that you can meet them, that we have the opportunity to share with you the skills that they learned, the skills that they're gonna take with them for the rest of their lives and how impactful these classes were to them. So on behalf of the Ventura Foundation, I want to thank you for investing in our future leaders. Eric Olson, you said that using AV Measure funds were being invested in assets. So I hope that you see our youth and our young leaders as assets of the city of Palmdale. I thank all of you.
Thank you.
Diane.
I'm a tad taller. Good evening, mayor and council members. Several months ago, as a member of PFC, I was here and spoke about Ms. Alarcon's drunken escapade at a local restaurant where she danced on tabletops, encouraging other patrons to do the same. At that time, I suggested she resign and since, and seek the help for her apparent alcoholism. Since then, there has been an incident at the Sheriff's Boosters, Big Shots, her call-in from New York, and at the food giveaway where she ended up breaking into a meeting at Congressman Correio's office. Her car was impounded and she fled before officers could determine to arrest her or not. Furthermore, I understand she was at an event yesterday representing the city where citizens determined she was drunk. She has had numerous DUIs and is currently on probation for a DUI conviction. While running for her City Council position, I don't recall her mentioning to her future constituents that she was on probation for a DUI and perhaps this is something they need to know. In Scripture, 1 Timothy 3:1 through 7, it tells us the qualifications for a church elder includes not being a drunkard. An elder is responsible for a small number of people and a small budget in comparison to a Palmdale council member who serves 166,000 citizens voting on a budget of $512 million as well as other issues that directly impact citizens. Again, I suggest, Ms. Alarcon, that you resign your position and seek help for your apparent alcoholism. As in your current condition, you are not fit to serve the citizens of Palmdale.
Antelope Valley Hispanic Chamber.
Laura Benning Court and council. I'm here to represent a business here in Palmdale. Even though we are the Antelope Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, we do blanket the whole Antelope Valleys, but when I have a business reach out to me and say, "What can you do to help us with this issue that seems to be not taken seriously from the council or our local government, which is our City Council, our Code Enforcement Department, about a homeless issue that is a hundred feet away from the front door of this business, which is a very good business?" We talk about assets in our city, right, in Palmdale, whether it's Palmdale, Lancaster, Antelope Valley, wherever it is, but without business, we don't have a city. And if they are considered an asset because they bring commerce to the valley here, we need to really listen to what their issues are. This business is the, it's called CORE, Center for Orthopedics and Rehabilitation. They called me and asked me if I would come by and take a look at something because they don't seem to be getting any response from Code Enforcement and the City Council. There is a makeshift homeless shelter built a hundred feet from their front door. I went over and took pictures of it and they said they've called several times to the city, several times to Code Enforcement, nothing is happening with that. So I'm here to represent that business and ask you to please take care of this issue and keep our local businesses happy here because they don't have to be here. They can open up their business in a different city, they don't have to be in Palmdale. If you guys would just consider to get a hold of the Center for Orthopedic and Rehabilitation and take care of that issue, I'd really appreciate it because they're looking at this chamber to help bring some resolve and that's what we're here to do. Thank you.
Can you give me their information or give it with...
Yeah, just for clarity and the record, where is it?
It's right...
Well, maybe they don't want to announce that publicly.
No, 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 I'll tell you where it's at. It's right there at the mall. It's the old...
It's next to Keller Williams.
Keller, Keller, it's right next to Keller Williams. So again, it's called Center for Orthopedic and Rehabilitation. He's a great businessman here in town and he's got a partner in Lancaster and I hate to see him leave Palmdale and take his business and partner up in Lancaster.
Thank you, this is actually the first time I've heard about this, so we will make sure that this is...
Yeah, that's the reason why I'm here, is just bringing it to you.
Thank you very much, thank you for coming.
Ashley Cortez.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Ashley Cortez, I'm a local resident and this year a member of the Wellbeing Lab cohort for this year, which is why I'm here. I'm here to share with you our group's community impact project for this year. It's called Rock Your Wellbeing. We're inviting members of the public to create rock art that has positive quotes, images, just things that bring positivity. They will be placed at three parks within the city of Palmdale, one being Marie Kerr, Desert Sands, and Dominic Masari, just to start, we hope to grow it. But basically, we'll collect all these rocks and we'll place them throughout the parks on walking trails for people to find with their families and spread some positivity in our community. And also it'll have a link to our Facebook and Instagram pages where we will host mental health resources, strength surveys, positive quotes, and just different resources to our community so that they have a hub of all the tools that we've learned in this year's cohort. And so I just wanted to take the time to invite you all to create one. We'd be happy to provide the supplies. We, please, members of the public, please connect with us on our social media channels so we can, you know, gather the rocks and we're gonna start placing those out within the next week. And so I just wanted to spread the word and invite you all to be a part of it. And thank you for bringing this into our community and giving us the opportunity to share this positivity.
And what is the name of your social media?
Thank you, it's, Instagram is rock underscore your underscore wellbeing. And then our Facebook page is Rock Your Wellbeing. So please like, get on there and like it and we'll give you more information on how to, you know, create the rocks and stuff like that.
So Ashley, I'm a rocker from a long time. My sister and I have done rocks and we travel extensively and we leave them at the rest areas. We put the rocks under plants for people to find and then there's a way to contact the person that created the rock. This is a national thing.
Yes.
I would love to see more of it in the Antelope Valley. I was disappointed that so few people do it here because my family's from the south and it's a very big deal back there. Make sure you always coat them with a waterproof coating because if it rains or whatever...
Yes, I know, we're supposed to get a wet winter, so we have the gloss ready to go.
Yeah, so a great idea, I love it. I'm gonna text my sister when I get home and she's in Tennessee and she'll love the idea because she has rocks all over the country, so right, right idea.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
I will be making a rock for you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Next speaker? Marissa Perdomo.
Good evening, council members, mayor. My name is Marissa Perdomo and I attend Peanut High School as a senior. I'm here to thank and share about the Making Ripples Leadership Development Program. I've learned not only what it is to become a leader, but that anybody is capable of it. I entered this program with little to no knowledge about being a leader and to be quite frank with the idea that it wasn't an important role. But I've come to learn that being a leader requires courage, self-discipline, and the ability to communicate and acknowledge others. This class has helped me and taught me how to prioritize, how to set goals, and how to empower myself and everyone around me. I believe that this program can do many things for my peers and younger generations, including benefiting them and effectively communicating as well as playing a central roles in society. I believe in this program. Thank you.
Next speaker?
I have a speaker slip that just says "Leadership Program," no name.
Anybody want to come talk about the leadership program? Come on up. Don't be shy.
Hi, my name is Scarlett Alvarez and I also attend Peanut High School as a senior. I attended a ten-week leadership program and thanks to the Ventura Foundation and the city, out of every week, I attended every Wednesday after school and I was actually glad to attend every Wednesday. At the end of the ten weeks, I received a $500 scholarship from the Ventura Foundation, which I am currently saving for college. And I received the knowledge about how to build my social skills and my confidence and how I got critiques on how I should speak in front of a crowd and I got feedback on how I should take feedback from others and how to share it along with others. And my other classmates in the class were from, ranged from middle school and high school. And I think this class, we should have another class very similar to this one because I know a lot of students who struggle with social anxiety and how to speak in front of other people and I think this class could help them in any ways and thank you again.
Thank you. And you know, it's not, it's not just students that have trouble speaking in public, many, many adults have the same fear. It's an acquired skill over time and so the earlier you start public speaking, the easier it becomes. So I take my hat off to you and thank you to the Ventura Foundation for giving them the opportunity. Next speaker?
Marcos Alvarez.
Marcos Alvarez? And thank you for filling out a form this time. Do you have a speaker card? Okay, come on up. We're gonna pretend you have a speaker card.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to submit this document as, to be officially accepted or accepted officially as part of the record for today.
Do you have copies for all of the council members?
I do not, I have...
Okay, we can go to Rhonda and she'll make copies for us. Thank you.
It's a lengthy document, but essentially it explains why I'd be here today as a member of the Human Rights Committee and explains why Marcos Alvarez, along with my support, made a motion at the last meeting, Human Rights Committee meeting of October 5th to recommend to all of you that you do several things. One, accept the data that was presented by Dr. Sharon O'Hara, professor at Berkeley, on her study that she did in the city of Palmdale correlating alcohol outlet density and violent crime. This is the second study of this nature. First one was done ten years prior by Dr. Robert Nash Parker. Nothing came of it. We're wondering what's gonna happen with this one as well. We thought it was important for those of you who hadn't seen the presentation to avail yourselves of it, maybe even call Dr. Sharon O'Hara back so she could present to you the data that you haven't been privy to. But also during this last presentation, mayor, she answered your question about data and how it was used, the data from the Sheriff's Department. You had an issue with it the first time and she answered it during this presentation. So what I am saying to you is we recommend it as a committee that you accept and label the data as viable and then move to correct the issue that she brings up in that report. She's plainly, plainly telling you, "We have a problem of violent crime and we can do something to..."
Thank you, your time is up. And what I'd like to say to the co-council is anybody who wants to watch that presentation, they can go to the human rights video, it's on our website. Go to that meeting and it's actually gonna be available to the council people to watch if they so care to do so.
Madam Mayor, when are you gonna answer the recommendation we made?
What was the date of that meeting so the council can watch that?
October 5th.
October 5th, thank you very much. So co-council, if you would like to watch the presentation by the researcher from Berkeley, it'll be on the video.
Yeah, my question is will we ever get an answer from you?
What answer?
At when?
Are you asking for an answer right now?
Um, not necessarily.
I don't accept her data, that is my answer.
You do not accept that?
Next speaker?
Is that the official position of the council or just yours, mayor? Pardon me?
I don't know what you're, you're supposed to be public speaking, so your time is up, sir.
Marcos Alvarez.
I'm thankful that I'm part of the Human Rights Committee. I listened and was closely to the data and why did I listen to that data? Because what's not being said here now is that it impacts people of color, whether it be black, white, Latino, it impacts the area. So we have an abundance of alcohol outlets in District 5, in District 3, you're in our districts, and over time, it does impact and it is correlated to crime. Now, this body has an opportunity to look at that and I'm hearing your suggestion, mayor, is that if individually each council member can look at it as they please. My suggestion is this, it's not just for you to look at. I'm hoping that collectively, we look at the interests of not this body, but the communities that live in there are the ones that are impacted seeing that. So my suggestion would be that if we can just put it in an agenda in a future meeting so the public can see that and we'll follow the steps that need to be done to make it public for everyone and then we can come to a conclusion on how we can still minimize the impact with...
Marcos Alvarez, are your meetings not public?
Yes, they are.
Did you not agendize that data for your meeting? Did you not give the public the opportunity to come and watch that presentation?
Yes, so, but again, as anyone else knows, and I'll respond to that because as anyone knows, when you look at a City Council meeting and a Human Rights Committee meeting, City Council meetings are generated by the public more than any other meeting. So that's why I'm recommending, let's have it public so most of the public that comes here to City Council...
I think the public has spoken that this is off-topic, this is not on our agenda, so if you want to talk, send me an email, we'll set up a schedule for you and I to meet in person.
Okay.
But this has been going on for years. We've had this conversation year after year after year after year.
And year after year, we didn't have the study we have now, which really makes an impact on all of us so we can lift and continue to live Palmdale in a positive light, that's all I'm saying.
You shared that data with the public? What was the public's response?
Let's have lunch.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
I represent their voices, thank you.
Carla.
Good evening. I actually did attend the committee meeting and I don't know, I don't know how I feel about you saying I represent their voices if you're choosing to be almost dismissive of the data and say that you don't see it as important, which is what I'm getting from you in the way that you are responding to these questions, questions that are coming as concerns from the community as well. I think that we do need to consider how many alcoholic facilities we have, or alcohol distributing facilities we have in the community, and how it compares west side to east side. I'm from the east side, I'm from District 3 and the last thing that I want is for my community to see an increase in liquor stores, right? I want my children to grow up in a safe community, not a violent community, not a violent, crime-ridden community. So I'd like for you to just, you know, be responsive to our concerns, not dismissive. You're here to hear us so that we can share that with you. And when you act dismissive, it discourages participation, right? Why should I show up if she doesn't care? So I'd just like you to consider that. Yes, we all have access, but does it mean anything if you don't care about it? That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And it's not that I don't care, it's just that I've heard this over and over and over again and there is a huge difference between correlation and causation. And there is a huge difference between correlation and causation. And when you get through advanced statistics, you'll understand that. Next speaker.
Mayor and Council, no more speakers on this item. No more speaker cards on this, for this item.
Oh, all right, Marcia, come on up.
A few weeks before Memorial Day in May, on social media, the question was put out about, uh, gathering for the citizens of Palmdale to remember, um, those that had laid down their lives for us. Uh, a group of citizens initiated a, um, Memorial Day service at our local cemetery. Since that was not done initially by the service organizations in the area with the, uh, contribution of the city officials. Uh, there was a turnout there. We had one council member, our mayor was there. The rest were not there. Around the corner now is going to be, um, Veterans Day. And I'm a veteran and, and I will be there at, uh, Ponce Long Square. On the eleventh month, the eleventh day, but not the eleventh hour. Uh, the eleventh, uh, Veterans Day as we know it today was, um, signed into law by President Ford in, uh, seven, in nineteen seventy-eight to stabilize Veterans Day. It was floating all around, uh, different first Mondays, second Mondays, whatever. And he locked it down to the eleventh day, the eleventh month, eleventh day, and the eleventh hour, which was the original armistice celebration or recognition from World War One. So I'm wondering why, since I've gone to decades of these services at the cemetery in the past, why ours is not going to be the eleventh hour? And with the history of Memorial Day, I'm thinking our council members don't want to be around the eleventh hour because maybe they're gonna be someplace else. Are they gonna be in Lancaster for that eleventh hour? Or are they gonna be in Rosemont? But it looks like they're not gonna be in our park.
I'll see what I can find out and I'll get back to you. Next speaker.
Hi guys, so, um, I'm gonna read words that are actually not mine and actually come from somebody who hates me vehemently. Palmdale City Council Member Andrea Alarcon in cahoots with Kathy McLaren made a false filing to run for council in summer of twenty twenty-two. For whatever reason, the city staff decided to let that slide and allow her to be elected. It immediately came to public knowledge that Alarcon was not only committing election fraud, but that she has a long and disturbing record of court cases due to her alcoholism, which continues unabated since the well-reported incident of leaving her very minor child alone in an empty city hall in Los Angeles in twenty eleven. Even in her short time in Palmdale, she has shown up to many events, formal and social, as well as official meetings, drunk and has used a lot of local sheriff resources, time being contained and escorted. This summer, she had one of her bizarre drunken temper showings at Assemblymember Juan Garrio's Palmdale office in conjunction with Ruth Sanchez. The sheriff impounded her unregistered car, but she and Ruth got away. Although there is still a report languishing on the DA's desk awaiting court filings. Alarcon has made lots of money working for Kevin Shankman, R X Paris and J J Murphy. But even they have not been able to get her to cooperate with many court-ordered rehabs she has managed to evade. Her late-night table dancing, her late-night drunken calls to anyone who will pick up the phone, her, in her drunken appearances representing the city of Palmdale are troubling because she is dangerous. During the eighteenth industry incident, uh, August eighteenth incident, she drunkenly drove her car illegally and recklessly across sidewalks where D H F had people gathered before it was impounded. People who receive calls from her driving on the freeway while obviously intoxicated wonder who will she collide with. And now Ruth Sanchez, Marcia Peoples and Eugene Hernandez and other of her supporters who frequent the microphone at city council meetings have been forced to admit her ongoing drama, but dismiss it saying she has a disease, she's not a sinner. They have vowed to enable her for spurious purposes. Yes, she has a disease and for the last two decades, at least two decades, she's conned many people as she can by not getting control of this disease. She just paid off her judgment to the Bar Association in February after being elected to council.
Next speaker.
Hi, good evening. My name is Viviana Vargas and I am, um, a John Maxwell Certified Leadership Coach. Uh, together with the Ventura Foundation, we put together the developing, uh, the leader within you class. And I'm here to say thank you. Thank you so much. That was a project that we've been trying to put together for over, over a couple of years. And when I saw it come to fruition, it's a wonderful use, heard about, uh, two of the students and we had thirty students. Uh, at graduation, the parents would come to me and tell me things I'd never dreamed of, of listening about the change that it made on these kids. Um, everything rises and falls on leadership. This is a quote by John C. Maxwell. Um, and on this class, we teach students things like integrity, respect, honesty, responsibility. They develop these skills and they get perspectives that many times they don't see at home or they don't, don't see modeled anywhere else. Um, I'm big on conceptualization, so that's what we do in this class. Cause we, you can tell a child, be good, be responsible, but if you don't explain what that means, they don't know. And even as adults, many times that's up to, you know, interpretation for everyone. So in this class, we do a good interpretation of what those words mean. What does it mean? How you model that, even in their day-to-day? Um, so thank you so much. We hope that, um, these classes continue because this class keeps students from the streets, from Fentanyl, listen to the Fentanyl, they keep them from bullying. Uh, they keep from depression, mental health, because we are empowering them. We are empowering their minds and their hearts. Um, and so they're preparing, we're preparing them to be quality adults in the future. Um, so these are future council members, business owners, um, aerospace staff, et cetera. So thank you. And I would like to advocate for more funds to continue with this program because this is also the change that we need for the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Viviana and Vicki also, don't be afraid to invite us to one of your classes to, to speak with them. And I would be glad to give them a tour of City Hall if they, if the next class would like to come through City Hall.
Absolutely. We did invite to graduation, but I will make an invitation.
I was out of state and I do apologize for that. I had just recently taken a vacation, so.
Thank you so much.
But I would like to, to speak with them, you know.
Absolutely.
People, when you say leadership, sometimes they automatically think male. And you can see from this room that there's a lot of females too, so I would be glad to come speak.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Keep us in mind. Thank you.
Sorry, I know I got my time, but I just wanna come up here again and you heard the stories. You heard Viviana. I wish the parents would have been here. This thirty students that went through this program, it changed their lives. It changed the way they're, they think now. It changed the way their behavior at home. And I know that it all starts at home, right? But we could help the parents, we could help the students to make great choices, to think as a leader, to know that we care, that Palmdale cares for the youth, that we want to invest in the youth. That we want to see them as assets of the, the city of Palmdale. So I implore you, you know, maybe through A V measure again, that we get funding to invest it back into our community. You all know that Georgia and I keep zero of this funding, you know, we invested back into the community. And this grant was aimed at the youth, it was invested in the youth and will be more than happy to do it again in collaboration with the city of Palmdale, in collaboration with Viviana Vargas and of course, the parents and our citizens. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
I do have documents, I do have documents for each of the council members. So, um, you know what I love about America, I'm being American, these little funny things, you know? When we founded our nation, we all would come in the hall and have our muskets, you know, but now I'm checked at the door cause cartel members, pocket knives, can't have those weapons. But anyways, a while ago, we were discussing a code of conduct. And this is here, a public matter, State Bar Court Clerk's Office with Andrea Alacan's name on it. And it seems here, uh, hearing required to determine whether crimes involve moral turpitude or other misconduct warranting discipline. So I kind of have an idea of why she may have fled her last incident because she's still currently on probation. Forty-eight months from two thousand nineteen would be till November nineteenth of this year. Um, I did submit a public request act with the sheriffs, uh, inquiring about the incident that a couple of my friends spoke about over here. Incident being referenced is about a female whose behavior was highly intoxicated. Sheriff deputies smelled alcohol on her breath and when inquired of drinking, she admitted to consuming alcohol. She was asked if she drove there, which she replied, yes, she drove there. Her vehicle was then impounded. Charges for incident were DUI and failure to comply. No arrests were made. So this is my return, uh, from the sheriff's station saying we're unable to provide the requested reports and body worn camera footage responses to your requests. Information you seek is under, um, is exclusively contained in investigatory files, which means it's still an open investigation, which means that's a violation of your probation, which I'm familiar with. I have a background similar to yours, reinstate your probation for a couple more years. But, um, there's a lot of good AA out here and I know because I've been there. There's one, I think in your district on Q and Twentieth East and they're all over town. Um, I forget the website, but there, there's a website. There's a lot of good sobriety out here in this community, so. Might be something to look into. And it's funny that these guys keep getting up here talking about alcohol and crime because since November, every other month, you provide us with something new. Thank you.
Beauty before age.
Hi, Council. You know, I, I am flabbergasted. I, I, I really am. I, I am beyond confused, okay? We have, we have groups here that are arguing with you about liquor stores, okay? I agree, alcohol leads to crime. But they support a member that gives them money that is alcoholic, that continues to break the law. Once again, I don't understand. I have a council member up here that continually breaks the law, still isn't in jail. Okay, whether it's a sickness or not, doesn't seek help, continues to say it's all a lie. But we've handed you documentation and proof, but she still says it's a lie. I am not a dumb person. I'm actually quite intelligent. So what am I missing? One plus one still equals two. It's great that we are raising youth, the youth up to show them how to actually be leaders. But it would be nice to show them how to be exemplary leaders. How are you going to do that when the leaders here continually break the law with no consequences? Anybody else would have lost their job. Anybody else would have had their probation violated. Anybody else would be in jail. So I, I am beyond confused. And I would love somebody to explain how one plus one doesn't equal two anymore. How you have proof, but it's a lie. How a liquor store is a problem, but long as an alcoholic is giving us money, that's not. Do you understand why I'm dumbfounded? Please, show them what true leadership looks like.
Uh, the sign behind you says, uh, incorporated August twenty-fourth nineteen sixty-two. Our first mayor was Larry Chimboli, if you recall. And in seventy-four, his, uh, reign came to an end. And then, do you remember Linda Cook? She was a dear friend. Richard, uh, 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 Richard Cook's mom, uh, he went to school with my daughter. And then came Jim Ledford for thirteen terms and Steve Hoffar and then we're honored to have you. Uh, but the reason why I mention this history is because, um, city of Lancaster did something wonderful. When I called him with a graffiti on my building on Avenue J, six five nine West Avenue J. Ken Mann was so kind, immediately called the group troops. Not like city of Palmdale when I called and say that we have a building here full of graffiti, they say, that's private property. We don't touch private property. When, by the way, real quick, when I looked at Google, please do, fifty worst cities in United States to live. Palmdale was number forty-seven. Thank God it was not on top. Well, for real reconciliation, uh, um, city of Lancaster was thirteen from top to worst. And then we go twenty minutes down Santa Clarita, one of the best cities to live in Irvine. I really believe our image is very important. When you drive down Palmdale Boulevard, look at the graffitis and homeless. If we could really, really do it, put into A V measure or any city budget, clean up the graffiti and politely get rid of the homeless people. They need help. These people need help. When you're leaving them alone there, you're not showing your humanitarian side. You are being very mean and cruel. You gotta give them what they need, mental help, alcoholic rehab and the drug rehabilitation. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and I think, um, Andrea Alarcon wants to make a statement.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I typically, um, don't respond to the comments that are made in this chambers. Uh, derogatory comments about me. Um, but I'm compelled to do so today because I need to correct the misinformation and enough is enough. There's a lot that can be said, but I will say this for the record. I am not currently on criminal probation, nor have I ever been on criminal probation as a candidate or member of this city council. Period. That is a fact and you have information that you disseminated, but I can show you exactly how you're misreading it. You're misreading it. Anyhow, I will just close, uh, by paraphrasing the words of Mr. Gallegos. He said earlier, everyone has First Amendment rights, but you've got to be right when you speak. You just can't slander people. The dissemination of this misinformation has to stop. Has to stop.
Okay. So, public comments is now closed and now we're moving on to item number nine. Informational report from Mayor and or council members. Um, my informational report is documented online, so you're welcome to read it at your leisure and I believe, uh, the other council persons have too. Does anybody want to expand on their documents that were? Yes, Mr. Lo, go ahead.
Okay, I don't wanna expand, actually I need to delete a couple of items that were mistakenly put in. I did not attend the North County Transportation Coalition, was under G D, was unable to attend that. And I did not attend the High Desert Corridor J P A, on the G L P meeting. So I just wanted to make the correction to those, uh, to that report.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Lo, I'd like to congratulate you on your, um, appointment to the Blue Ribbon Committee on homelessness. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Congratulations on that. I hope you bring great things to our city because our homeless population certainly does need help. Anybody else want to make a change or correction to their informational report?
So my informational report, um, was not submitted, um, in advance of the meeting, but I do want to submit it for the record. It includes twenty events that I've attended in the past month.
Anyone else? We're good? Okay, so moving on to item number ten. We have city council announcements and requests. How about requests, city council? Anybody wanna announce anything? Anyone wanna request anything?
Uh, trunk or treat was very well attended. The shout out to George Ventura, um, we had a lot of people come out and a lot of happy trick-or-treaters.
Good, good, good. All right, if, anybody else? If not, we'll move on to number eleven, city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have in front of me six pages of events that we have either completed in the last month or will feature in the next two weeks. Um, all of these events are on our website, so I won't go into them into, into any significant amount of detail in the interest of time. But I will call out to you specifically some things that are coming up between now and the next, um, council meeting. We have our master plan survey results in those community meetings, which everyone was, uh, notified of this evening. We also have an ILEAD Palmdale Youth Conference that's gonna be happening on November fourth, where we're engaging our local youth. We have the Heart and Stroke Walk on November fourth at Marie Kerr Park. A V Hispanic Chambers Dia de los Muertos Fiesta on November fifth at Ponce Long Square. Palmdale Playhouse Concert Johnny Gamboa on November fifth. Neighborhood virtual, uh, neighborhood watch, excuse me, virtual presentations on November sixth and fourteenth. The Great Food Rescue Documentary, uh, at the Palmdale Playhouse on November ninth. The Musical Road unveiling, a Marine Corps birthday special event being held at, on B J's Corner on Avenue N and Sierra Highway on Friday, November tenth at eleven AM. The Patriotic Pulse of Palmdale Blood Drive being held here in Ponce Long Square. The Patriotic Pulse of Palmdale Blood Drive being held here in Poncelon Square on Friday, November tenth, the Veterans Day Ceremony on November eleventh. A Million Thanks on Saturday, November eleventh, at Dominic Masari and Marie Kerr Parks, where kids and families are invited to write thank you letters to veterans and active duty troops. The reveal of the Palmdale, Palmdale Library Plain Air Murals on Monday, November thirteenth. Park Connect Meeting at McAdam Park on Tuesday, November fourteenth. And my last comment this evening is related to a grant that we just recently received, we did put out a press release on this, but I wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. The city of Palmdale was recently awarded almost eight hundred thousand dollars from the California Department of Justice Tobacco Grant Program. To tackle the illegal sales of cigarettes and tobacco products to minors. This grant funds Palmdale's compliance efforts, including our retailer inspections. Our target, the targeting of problematic retailers enforcement operations and single sales of flavored and unflavored tobacco products. The Community Compliance Division partners with the L A County Sheriff to perform all of these investigations and corrections and compliance. So with that, that is the end of my report, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
So if a person wanted to find out more information or if they forgot the date that you said. They would just go to our website and click on the community calendar?
Yes.
And all of that information is on the calendar?
Information is there.
Okay, great, good to know. All right, so moving on to item number twelve, this meeting is now adjourned to November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three at five PM, right here at City Hall Chamber. And we will see you then, good night, everybody.